Good evening, this is the Milford Planning Board. Today is April 21st, 2015. And what is the first on the agenda? Pat?
I'll take a motion for reorganization and electing a new chair.
Second?
Yep.
John?
Who made the nomination?
John's gonna make the nomination.
I nominate Lena for chair.
Do we want to do all of them, or each one separately?
Just do chair first, and then Lena takes back over. I second that. All in favor?
All in favor.
Three in favor, one opposed?
Well, I do accept the chair. The second time I've been doing this. Okay, let's move on to vice chair. I nominate John Cook for vice chair. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Pat. All in favor? Unanimous of four. John, you are the vice chair. Okay. Clerk?
Make a note.
Go ahead, Pat.
Oh, go ahead.
Make a motion for Karen Jackson.
Second. Motion for Karen Jackson to be the clerk. Motion made by Pat, second by Joe. All in favor?
Yeah.
Unanimous of four. Okay, here's the representatives. The MAC, M.A.P.C., S.W.A.P.R.P. representative?
If I might, I was that for the last few years.
We switched last year, John, actually. I think it's me now.
It's you now?
Did you get it, Joe?
I get the stuff in the mail.
Yeah, well, they never change the mailing address, but I think I'm actually the representative.
I nominate Joe.
Second.
Nominate Joe for that representative. Motion made by John, seconded by Pat. All in favor? Unanimous of four. Fair Housing Committee representative?
I think that was Babe.
Didn't it? Still is.
Is it Babe?
Make a motion for Babe.
Second.
Second motion, a motion made by Pat, seconded by Joe. All in favor? Unanimous of four. Open Space Advisory Committee liaison?
That was me.
Is that you, Joe?
That was you, Joe?
Yeah, it was.
You want to continue with that?
Unless somebody wants to change, it's okay for me. I mean, we haven't done any, there's been any meetings recently, so.
I nominate Joe.
A nomination made by John, seconded by?
Hold on, I'll take that one, Joe, because you're the middle school east, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll take the open space.
No, I'll take that back and nominate Pat.
Nomination by Pat. Nomination of Pat, seconded by John. All in favor? Unanimous of four. Middle School East Reuse Committee liaison?
Nominate Joe.
Joe, Pat nominated Joe. Second from John. All in favor? Unanimous of four. All right.
You can do all these at one swing.
Yeah. Authorization, authorize the clerk and the town planner to sign correspondence for the chairman. Authorize clerk and town planner to sign the planning board meeting postings with town clerk. Authorize town planner to sign an 81P plan after board approval. Authorize town planner to sign the planning board payroll. Authorize town planner to call planning board meetings and set public hearings. Authorize town planner to set planning board agenda.
Motion.
All in favor. Motion made by Pat. Second by John. All in favor? Unanimous of four. All right. That's taken care of. There is no?
Do the minutes.
You have no 81Ps?
We have to do the minutes.
You have to do the minutes.
Yeah.
Motion.
Motion made by John.
Joe.
Joe, seconded by Pat. All in favor? Unanimous of four. All right.
I'd give it a minute before you start the 7:05, because I don't think you have enough time to do number four.
What is number four?
National Site Plan.
No.
That's why I just said we'll give it a minute.
Yes, in the last public hearing, so.
There's no 81Ps?
Nope.
I made a site plan.
Do you want to put your presentation up on the board?
No, we don't have enough time. We'll just give it a minute.
I got five.
That's fine, yeah, 7:05.
I got five.
There you go, Jerry says to go.
Okay.
I'd say 7:05, sorry.
Okay, 7:05. Public hearing, Larry?
Milford Planning Board, Town of Milford, Mass. Notice of public hearing on Tuesday, April 21st, 2015, in Room 3 of Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street. The Milford Planning Board will, at the times designated, conduct public hearings regarding the following. The full application and/or maps of the above items are available for public inspection Monday through Friday from 8 to 4 at the Office of Planning and Engineering, Town Hall, 52 Main Street, Milford, Mass. Interested parties may express their views at the above scheduled hearings. This was published in the Milford Daily News on 4/7 and 4/14, 2015. The first public hearing is application of Board of Selectmen to amend Section 3.9, signed regulations of the zoning bylaw by adopting a new Section 3.9.1.4E relating to signs on town athletic fields.
Jerry?
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of Board of Selectmen. This is an issue that came to light in the course of various enforcement activities over the last year. So it's a very discreet amendment to the signed provisions of the bylaw that would add a new exception from prohibition on certain kinds of signs. And this exception relates to, as exactly as it says, signs erected and maintained on publicly-owned athletic field facilities to the extent authorized and approved by such border agency with jurisdiction over such facilities. What we figured out, as we were looking at other issues, is that the typical kinds of signs that are down on Rosenfeld, along the outfield fence, typical, everywhere you see in the country, little league fields, athletic fields, were quote "illegal" and unquote under our bylaws, it was written. So this is really directed at that kind of situation, which is going to be on our athletic fields. And we put it in such a way that, obviously, we have elected boards that are in charge of these fields, the park commissioners in most cases, the high, the school committee and others. There's a certain level of responsibility, and they're going to take responsibility for the kinds of signs they have there. So we're just suggesting that we create this exception so that those typical kinds of little league or high school football field signs that are up there to raise funds or for other charitable purposes, or whatever other purpose, be exempt, otherwise exempt from the bylaw, because they're going to be, obviously, governed by the park commissioners, the school committee. Those are the two boards that are typically going to be in charge. So it really is that simple a proposal.
What about the signs at Tank Field, that there are always, there's a number of signs there?
Well, Tank Field is an athletic facility. That one will be under the park commissions. The park commissions can take, can and will take control of that, and they will govern that and issue whatever permissions they have to issue, and limit the sizes, the numbers, and that kind of thing.
The reason I mention that, I received a number of calls about the amount of signs, and I'm sure everybody else throughout the town who have complained about it, you know. So the park commissioners will take charge of?
In that particular instance?
In that particular area?
The park commissioners, yes. That'll be the park commissioners down at Rosenfeld. It'll be the school committee up at the high school field. And they will all individually make, you know, hopefully rational, intelligent decisions in terms of what sizes they allow, and how long they can be up, and what areas they can be on. So presumably, they won't be offensive.
Anyone else? Pat?
These are just the sponsorship signs, for the most part.
That's generally what they're going to be, your advertising events, or that kind of thing, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I have a significant issue in it, in that there's no stipulation of size. I mean, everybody else in the town of Milford has to go through size requirements, has to go through, you know, how long they're there. I see no reason why we should get away from that. The two schools came to us for, that we had to allow for a zoning amendment to allow for signs at the high school. There's no reason why they can't come forward and ask for that, and meet the requirements of the town of Milford in their bylaws. I see no reason why we would open this up, not going to make a comment on the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, or whatever, but this is forever. And I have no idea what's coming in the future, but effectively, we're allowing whatever signs we want, whatever size they want, that they feel comfortable with. And to me, especially at places like Tank Field, across the street from the high school, those are all residential areas, and I believe that the size of those signs should be controlled, and that should be part of our zoning bylaw. And there shouldn't be an out. I mean, we're trying to control banner signs on Main Street, but yet we feel it's okay to come before us and allow whatever size we want at other locations. And to me, I can't support that. I think that it's wrong. I don't have an issue down at Vodolato, or those places where they have less of an impact, but then, again, they can come forward and ask us for a waiver of the zoning bylaw and have those signs put up.
Joe, wouldn't you argue that these are more temporary signs than they are permanent?
And they need to fall under the temporary bylaw. They could or couldn't be, Pat. There's nothing that says they are or aren't as part of this bylaw. Whoever the boards are that makes the decision can make whatever decisions they want.
You are correct, but I think the way Jerry posed it, when you look at certain athletic fields, those are basically temporary seasonal signs at best. And again, I think that most of those youth sports rely heavily on those sponsorship signs to be survival. I mean, I know over the years, I've sponsored teams. I think it's $500, $600, which buys the kids, you know, uniforms, and also pays for supplies and so on and so forth. I think if you start eliminating that, and to that point, though, I don't think over the last 20 years that those signs have grown much at all.
You know, I've seen the signs up at Tank Field, out in the road, every which way. I've seen non-maintenance. I've seen, you know, various sized signs up there.
But I think that this gives the powers to the parks department to either say yea or nay, associated with those signs, whereas right now, I don't think there's any oversight on those signs at all.
Well, I think they have. They have the oversight. They can certainly take them down. They control the facility.
Correct.
Yeah, in terms of the Tank Field, that has been an issue. It's an issue that's been in dispute. And this is an effort to try to resolve it, to get some control over it. Some people have the view that those signs have been legal all along. Some people have been of view that they've been illegal all along. Setting all that aside, this is a way that there'll be control over, by, again, a responsible elected body, in this case, the Board of Park Commissioners, who will, hopefully, and I expect, control it. In terms of, you know, size requirements or whatnot, again, I don't think I'd be naive. You've got to give some degree of responsibility to these boards, that the park department does a good job. They're not going to let things get out of control. They haven't let them get out of control, if they're not, nor has the school committee. So I've got a lot, a high degree of faith in the way that they'll handle these things. You start putting a lot of provisions in the bylaw in terms of size, it's not going to fit every instance, and you're going to be going to the zoning board for variances unnecessarily. So, again, it's a judgment you folks have to make, but.
It's a thing of taking them down, also. They never take them down.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, and I know the townspeople are aware of it, and whoever else is aware of it, but.
I think there's a better way of doing it. I think this is just this carte blanche, and I'm not willing to go down this far down the path. I mean, it's a temporary sign, there's a way to address that in temporary sign bylaw. And I still feel there should be, I don't, I think everybody should play by the same rules. Size should be there, how it's mounted should be there, what the requirements are should all be there, should be spelled out out front. It shouldn't be something that we have to guess as to what that board, on that particular day, whoever they are, that particular year, says is okay. There should be a town bylaw, and that, to me, is the way that this should be done. I'm not saying anything against any of the ones that advertise there. I'm not saying I'd necessarily change anything, but if we're going to regulate it, I think it should be regulated correctly.
Not only, not only that, but the kids make these signs from the high school, I think. Don't they? Some of them?
A lot of them are professionally done.
Are they professionally done? Okay.
And some are somewhere in between.
Someone in the audience that want to speak?
Yes, yes.
You want to give us your name and your address?
Evelyn Bontempo, 3 West Walnut Street, Milford.
Okay.
I am in total agreement with Mr.?
Caljone?
Joseph Caljone, yes.
Okay.
I will just give you examples. There is a lack of enforcement because there is selective, selective enforcement on certain signs. I picked up Milford softball in the middle of Dilla Street only a few weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
December, on the first tennis court in Milford Town Park, on the chain-linked fence, there was an eight-by-10 sign put up by a church in Milford for a Christmas bazaar. It fell down at least a half a dozen times. The plastic that holds is still there in the breeze.
Right.
Milford Chestnut, no, Claflin Hill Symphony sign was up for exactly 11 months, next to the flagpole, Milford Pavilion in the Milford Town Park. According to present bylaw, no signs are allowed in town parks. Political signs or yard sale signs. Tank Field, the lovely senior, the prom for senior citizens, that sign is still up there. And that was, April 9th was the event. We're now into the 21st, a big sign. I agree with the gentleman, Joseph, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Joe Caljone.
Caljone. All right. The size, I would like to see it A, B, C, D, E, F, G. The size of the sign, how long it can be there? Is the event going to be, if it's going to be in May, does the sign go up in March? Can anybody put up a sign, whether it's the school department, whether it's the parks department? Is it a profit, nonprofit organization? If you say something against a certain, let's say, the athletics, or it's a cancer society, or it's a church bazaar, and that sign, some of them, you can't even read them. You actually, you come up Fountain Street, and if you're not the first or second car, you can't even read some of those signs. And they stay there so long. I would like to see everything in this application written out. And the enforcement by the parks department, by the school department, is lax. And that is very difficult to enforce. I realize that. And I also think, again, there is selective enforcement. As I witnessed a selectman's meeting. And a sign was illegally put up, and yet someone said, "You put it back, because I want it back there."
Okay.
I mean, what was this?
Well, you know, from what?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Bontempo.
I have a question. Do the boards or agencies that control these fields know they control them?
Do they know they control them? Again, up to now, there's been somewhat of a misunderstanding or a lack of knowledge in terms of whether or not these signs are permitted or not permitted. Again, my usual, the classic example is Rosenfeld. Really, nobody's questioned that, but in fact, those signs today, down there on the outfield fence, are quote "illegal" unquote. And there are other signs in other locations, many of them are. And I think we all agree that in any location, they ought to be controlled to some extent, but, you know, to what extent one can control this kind of detail and minutia in a zoning bylaw, it doesn't belong in a zoning bylaw.
Exactly.
It belongs, and again, it's a rational decision making by your elected officials. And it's not to excuse any lack of enforcement or over-enforcement in the past. Set that aside. This is an effort, just simply, to clarify what the status of these signs will be, and hope and expect that these town officials will do a good job of enforcing the rights that they have to allow these signs.
To your point, Jerry, this is what's needed, because to this point, there seems to be some uncertainty on who controls what and why.
Exactly.
I think with this bylaw, it puts the ownership back towards the individual boards, whether it be Parks Department, School Department, Selectmen, what have you. And then it's up to them to enforce it. And if it's not enforced, you know how they say, where the culprit lies. I mean, I think, unfortunately, you need something, and I'm with Jerry, as much as I understand what Joe's saying, this is not the place to start dimensionalizing. It's up to the individual, respected elected boards.
I think it has to be here.
For example, who controls the, who controls the Tank Field?
Well, the Tank Field is now, it's owned by the Milford Water Company.
Exactly.
But it's under the supervision of the park department, because it is used as an athletic field to some, well, to some extent. So they would take control of this, and they would govern who, you know.
All right, once again, do they know they can do that?
They haven't known up to now, frankly. They certainly do now, certainly discussed it with them. And if this bylaw passes, they will set some parameters in terms of things like size, location, how long things can be up, when they, you know, how soon they have to come down. So they will, hopefully, and I have very expectation they will, working with me, develop some of that and enforce it. Probably have some sort of permit process for that particular location.
Well, I also feel that, once the committee gets it, and once this gets out in the newspapers, I'm sure people will take a second look and kind of approve the fact that it would, the zoning would be fine, and people would understand that they do have to put it up. I get that the schools need to advertise what's going on, so.
There seems to be an expectation, I see in town, that there are people who like that location, that people think it's a good location for this, and I think if it's done correctly and tastefully, for lack of a better word, it can work as a good location. But it can't be mishmash of signs that have been thrown up and never taken down.
And that's the big issue.
That's a matter, then, you know, again, up to now, nobody's really known what to do with that whole situation.
Right.
Nobody's understood whether they're legal or illegal, or whether they're exempt or what. Now, if this passes, it'll be known, the park commissioners will take control of it. They will issue permits or approvals, information, the size, and everything else, and hopefully govern it.
And we'll give them their phone number.
Give them mine.
One more, one more question, Mrs. Bontempo?
I have a question to Counselor Moody. What does the building inspector, what is his place in this? For enforcement?
Building inspector's role is, will be, the same as it is now. He's the enforcement authority for the zoning bylaw. That won't change. It's got nothing to do with this. If he finds violations that happen to be in these locations, he'll have to enforce that.
Thank you.
But again, the goal is here to put the immediate control in the hands of those elected boards.
I agree.
All right.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Anyone else? All right.
I make a motion.
Go ahead, Pat.
I make a motion to close the public hearing and pass favorable to the town meeting.
Pat made a motion to close the public hearing and pass a favorable report to the town meeting. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Three in favor, one opposed.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
Good night, Jerry.
Good night.
Public hearing number two. It's definitely after 7:10. Application of Planning Board to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting Section 3.8, deleted annual town meeting, Article 47, 1976, and adopting in lieu thereof a new Section 3.8 entitled Obstructions Permitted in Rear Yards.
Required yards.
Required yards. The board's proposing this amendment to clarify various obstructions that are permitted in yards that are established by the zoning bylaw. Currently, there are no provisions for such common things as overhanging eaves, gutters, stairs and porches, fences, walls, and hedges, et cetera, that are normally occurring, especially in residential neighborhoods. The bylaw separates among the various yards the different dimensional requirements and things such as awnings and shutters and canopies, bay windows, et cetera.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Do I hear any, is anyone in the audience want to speak to this? Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the public hearing and send a favorable recommendation to the town meeting.
Motion made by Joe to close the public hearing?
Yes, seconded.
Seconded by Pat and sent a favorable to the town meeting members. Okay. If they take a vote, oh, unanimous of four. Thank you.
And it is past 7:15. We're catching up. Public hearing number three, application of the Planning Board to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting Section 1.5.4 entitled Completion of Plantings and adopting in lieu thereof a new Section 1.5.4 to restore language that had previously been inadvertently omitted. This section, or subsection, deals with the certificate of zoning compliance issuance process from the building official. It deals with the completion of plantings and whether or not a certificate of zoning compliance can be issued under the current bylaw, and it's been this way for a number of years. Basically, the last few words of the next to the last sentence were omitted, along with the first several words of the last sentence in that paragraph were omitted, so it makes no sense. This restores the language and basically clarifies that subsection.
This is what gives clarity to either a full building certificate or a temporary, Larry?
Yeah. Correct.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that want to speak to this? Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the meeting?
Johnny?
Move we close the public hearing and make a favorable recommendation to the town meeting.
John moved to make a favorable, close the public hearing, make a favorable to town meeting. Can I hear a second? Seconded by Joe. All in favor? Unanimous of four. Moving right along.
Yeah, it's.
It's 7:20.
7:20.
Public hearing number four, application of Planning Board to amend the zoning bylaw by adding at the end of Section 1.4.2A thereof the words, and quote, "Such grading plan shall comply with the individual lot drainage requirements of Section 3.16 herein," unquote, and by adopting a new Section 3.16, pardon me, individual lot drainage. And as it clearly says, the new standards in Section 3.16 will deal with drainage on individual lots that aren't covered by the subdivision control. There are many lots that are created by 81P plans, and all of the drainage requirements of subdivision control don't apply, so that this level of review actually is provided for generally in the subsection referred to. There's just no specific requirements, so that's what this section does, is add a new Section 3.16. So there's a reference to those specific standards. The town engineer will be able to confirm for the building official whether or not adequate drainage is being provided.
Thank you, Larry. Seeing this is a public hearing, is anyone here that wants, would like to speak to this? Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to close the public hearing and pass a favorable to town meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Pat to close the public hearing, seconded by John, and send a favorable report to the town meeting. All in favor? Unanimous of four. All right.
We're catching up. 7:25, yeah, we're almost there. Application of Planning Board to amend the zoning bylaw by rezoning the following parcels from RB, Single Family Residential District, and/or IB, Highway Industrial District, to CB, Neighborhood Commercial District. The parcels are Assessors Map 43, Block 0, Lots 51, 61, 61A, 62A, 62B, and 63. The six parcels referenced herein total 8.7 acres in area and are located in the vicinity of 55 Medway Street. Just so the board has something to refer to. The proposal is to accommodate redevelopment proposals in the area and to clean up the zoning map as to the pattern of conflicting residential and industrial districts in this area. Currently, the zoning in this area has no correlation to either existing or proposed development patterns. The IB industrial zone in this vicinity floats in a larger surrounding area of residential zoning and even splits one property. The proposed amendment will create a contiguous CB commercial zone for the entire frontage on the south side of Medway Street from Maria's Restaurant at the east end west to include the entire Alamo Restaurant property. As you can see from the handout, this includes, as I just mentioned, the Maria's Restaurant site, and includes the new Cornerstone Care Facility. It includes Mr. Chair Migley's residence, and it includes the Alamo property, where the Alamo itself is located, as well as the residence just west. This area has been improperly zoned, to my mind, anyway, for a number of years. This will finally get everything back in order and allow for orderly redevelopment and development in the area.
Okay, thank you, Larry. This is a public hearing. Okay, thank you, Larry. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to address, address the board?
No.
Oh, Joe.
I'll set Joe.
I only wish you would have done it in 1987.
I know it!
Three times. But that's okay.
Okay, Joe. Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Close the public hearing.
Oh, Joe, you're up here.
Make a motion to close the public hearing and send a favorable recommendation to town meeting.
Second, Joe.
Second.
Motion made by Joe to close the public hearing and send a favorable to town meeting, second by Pat. All in favor? Unanimous of four.
7:30, right on time.
7:30, right on time.
About that. Public hearing number six, application of the Planning Board to amend the zoning bylaw relating to farmers' market uses by adding such uses by special permit in the RA General Residential Zone in section 2.3, the use regulations schedule of the bylaw, and by adding a new section 3.17 relating to farmers' market. As we had discussed numerous times in preparation of this amendment, the intent was to accommodate farmers' markets in certain limited residential locations, because farmers' markets are classified as basically commercial uses that are allowed in most commercial and industrial zoning districts. It has been determined that an appropriate way to allow for them in residential areas is to establish a special permit granting mechanism in the zoning bylaw. Since the primary alternative locations for a farmers' market are located in the RA General Residential District, the zoning amendment has been crafted to provide for that via special permit and site plan review.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this? Yes?
You're opposed, right?
I am. After all our work.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That's okay. Do you want to give us your name and your address, please?
Jennifer Demarchion. Thank you for-
Your address?
51 School Street, Milford, Mass.
Thank you.
Thank you for working with us, first of all. I just wanted to, first of all, I'm not opposed, after all of our, it was brought to our attention that we think that there were a couple clerical typographical omissions from all of our drafting in what has been proposed. We lost sauces, non-alcoholic beverages, and prepared foods. So, we wanted to address that now versus, if we can, if at all possible. I mean, it's, they were all things that, according to our notes and everything that we could review previously in our meetings, that were there, and I think just in all of the editing and back and forth, it may have gotten lost, so.
So could you just repeat that again? What was omitted?
Sauces.
Mm-hmm.
Non-alcoholic beverages, so juices, ciders, such on and so forth in that category, and the prepared foods. So, I don't know how you would prefer.
Jen, let me just ask you a quick question.
Yes.
I think sometimes you're trying to get so focused on what you want that you're not reading in between the lines. And to me, the sausage, sausage, sauces.
Sausage? Sausage?
Yeah, things of that nature-
Seem to be.
-are already in there, in my mind. I'm just-
Well, I think the concern is-
You know, when I look at, when it says what are prohibited?
Right. Well, it-
That's pretty cut and dry. When you start wanting to get into, you know, because now all of a sudden we're going to start talking about apple juice, but it doesn't say orange juice. See, this is where I think, and again, maybe I'm being a little-
I understand. Our concern is-
In between the lines, it's there.
And I-
If you feel more comfortable and you want to put it, see, the problem is, is I think you're getting so focused-
Too specific.
That you're going to continually come back and say-
Well, I don't want to do that. The concern is-
And this is why sometimes you have to read between the lines and say, it's there.
And I agree. The concern would be-
To your point, I 110% agree with you. It was kicked around, stabbed.
It was so far, and the concern is-
I think the intent is exactly, in between the lines, the intent is there. So, juices and things of that nature, in my mind, are already there. I don't think anyone's going to say to you, wait a minute, I don't see juices there. That's my opinion.
And can I just say that I think the concern on that side, because I can understand what you're saying. I don't want to be so specific that we are headed in the direction of what is and isn't, like, you know, it's why we didn't say apple versus orange.
Correct.
The problem, or the concern, right.
Cranberry.
Cran raspberry.
Here we go.
Cran orange.
Right.
The concern becomes is like, we don't want to, and not just we, but anybody going forward, there is the reading between the lines, but you don't want, who's going to, if we read between the line, if we read between the lines and then someone complains, that's where I don't want, and it's not just me, it's-
See, juices to me fall right in line with the true, true spirit and intent of farmers' market. I don't see how you can get a complaint from anyone. I'm sorry, but I don't.
Tea, coffee.
And this is what I'm saying. I understand what you're saying, but-
Well, that's why it was on there at one point, and there was no issue with it, and it just, well-
To me, it's still there.
Which is why it was, we wanted to address it in front of the board before we got all the way to town meeting, and somebody, I mean, we have gotten questions, we've gotten comments, we've gotten emails of, is this going to be allowed, is that going to be allowed? And I can say, as far as I'm reading it, it's fine.
Correct.
And then, thing, like, you know, going back and forth, it seemed, it wasn't like we took it out on purpose. It was more of a, we, it got lost in translation.
I still think it's there.
Do we want to, you know, so it-
Well, to change it now, to change it now, it would have to be changed in the motion on the floor of town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So you could amend that at the town meeting if you-
You could, but I mean-
I don't want to do it.
I wouldn't go there.
That's why I'm here.
I wouldn't go there.
I would caution you not to do that.
But what I'm doing is, I'm giving you the option. You can do that, as Larry said. As a board member, I would say to you, you know, don't go there.
I wanted it to be addressed because it was brought up as a concern.
You have it on tape, as you always have had it on tape.
Hey.
To be perfectly honest with you, and again, to me, that's the true essence of what a farmers' market is.
I would rather be over-communicating than under-communicating, and I know you're going to hate me for that, because, you know, it is what it is.
That's fine. Jen, we, we've appreciated all you've, time and effort you and your committee have put into this, and we thank you for it.
Well, and then we appreciate you putting in the effort, but, you know, and it's just before it gets to town meeting, and before those-
I think you're going to confuse the issue. You keep putting along your list together.
You've got to, I know.
And this is where, I think, I think that you have your answer, and if it's okay with you-
Push it.
Sail it through.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Works for me. No, I'm good with it.
Anyone else?
I'm good with it. How to address it?
My sense is that you may find-
Ask if there's anybody else.
I am.
After a year or so, you may discover, we all may discover, it needs to be amended again, anyway. So, this isn't necessarily the last time anybody will ever hear of it. If that's any consolation, that's-
Well, we know that. Didn't we say that we're coming back in a year or two?
But they have other, other members of the public that would like to speak.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this issue?
I just have one question.
Okay.
Where in 2016 is the farmers' market going to be placed in a residential-
Area.
Area.
Memorial School.
We're not 100% certain on that. That's the honest answer.
Town Park, most likely.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Town Park, most likely.
No.
We don't know.
Well, not, not.
Memorial School.
There are two places.
That's the honest answer.
Excuse me. There are two places, and what's the two places?
One is Memorial School that she's talked about, and the other one is on-
Stacy.
Stacy.
Stacy's school.
Stacy.
Okay. Memorial School on Walnut Street?
Yes.
Between there, there's a lot of room in there.
No, 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 I'm talking about the parking.
There's parking lot.
No, on Walnut Street, you can only park on one side.
Park on one side.
Right.
Correct.
All right, so the beginning of Walnut Street coming down Congress, there are, I believe, nine, no parking on this side.
Oh, really?
Yes. All the way down to-
You can't park on the school side.
You can't park on the school side.
Well, it also goes down almost further to Mrs. O'Hanishian's house.
Do you want to take that?
No, I don't.
All right, all right, Evelyn. Continue, I'm sorry.
But there's parking at Stacy's School.
And there's parking at Memorial School.
That's where they're parked across the street.
But you need, according to what I read, don't you, it says you need five acres. So where, just where in that locale?
Oh, you need a site.
Are you going to, the five, where is it going to be placed? Has it been a definitive decision?
No, no.
There has not.
There has not.
No, no.
All right.
We can't make a decision as of yet. It's just the whole parcel is what we're being addressed right now. It's because we couldn't even really discuss it until the decision was made and, hopefully, when it passes at town meeting. We can't even really talk about it other than general ideas, and the general ideas as of now are-
This gives you an option to go into the RA.
Exactly.
Whereas right now, you're in the commercial industrial.
Right.
This is step one, Evelyn. This is step one.
But there is no definitive idea of exactly in 16 where it may be.
Nope, nope. You don't have, you don't have-
Not at this point. Right.
They could still be at the water company.
Right. I mean, it's very possible.
Honestly, they could.
Yeah, because, I mean, based on the timing alone, unless we get a special permit applica, and you can correct my dates if I'm wrong, but if Larry and I had the correct conversation, even if we get a special permit application and on day one following town meeting, we're not going to even be able to get that addressed until October of this year. So, I mean, it's very vague, as far, I mean, it's, it's the first step in the process, as far as we know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Hopefully see you soon.
Yep, yep.
I move we close the public hearing and make a positive recommendation to town meeting.
John, John move to close the public hearing. Do I hear a second on that?
Second.
Second by Joe, and to pass along a positive favorable to the town meeting members. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Joe did.
Oh, Joe did. Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous of four. All right, thank you.
Right on schedule still. Larry, right on schedule.
Pretty good. All righty. Public hearing number seven.
All right.
Application of the Planning Board to amend the subdivision regulations. Finally, no zoning. Subdivision regulations by adding specific drainage standards to section 4B to subsection Q, by adding a new subsection S requiring detailed calculations for certain development proposals, and by adding specific drainage requirements at the end of section 5F entitled Drainage. The, the board had discussed this numerous times, and this is kind of the bookend to the individual lot drainage zoning amendment we talked about earlier. This will obviously apply to any new subdivision coming before the board. It'll allow for specific standards where the current bylaw isn't this beefed up. The actual calculations right now aren't as clarified as this would, as this would require. So, these are specific, for example, handling the 25-year storm, as opposed to the current calculations.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience would like to speak to this? Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Just a point of clarification. Larry, you said we were going to come back at some point to look at the quality calculations.
Correct. Once the MS4 is finalized, and, yep.
That's that, Joe?
Yep.
Make a motion to close the public hearing, pass a favorable to town.
Doesn't go to town.
Doesn't, it's just us.
It doesn't go to town meeting.
I thought you said to approve.
To approve. Motion made by Pat to close the public hearing and to approve the new regulation, Planning Board Amendment to subdivisions.
Second.
Second by Joe. All in favor? Unanimous of four. Okay. One more.
Yeah, so you didn't think we'd make it, did you?
We're only five minutes off. Public hearing number eight. It's 7:45. Application of Milford Plaza Associates for special permit approval regarding a 10% reduction in required off-street parking at 120, 128 Medway Street. Subject property is located on a 13.95 acre site at 120, 128 Medway, as shown on the Assessors Map 43, Block 0, Lot 95B, located within an IB Highway Industrial Zone. The special permit is being sought pursuant to sections 1.10 and 3.4.1B sub 3 of the bylaw in order to allow for a 10% reduction of required off-street parking spaces for the shopping center redevelopment proposed on the subject property. A site plan has also been submitted for the redevelopment proposal, and what I had suggested that Ryan be able to do is kind of do the agenda item number four, amended site plan review concurrently, because that'll help him explain the basis for the request for 10% reduction by special permit.
All right.
Great. Thank you very much. My name is Ryan Dean Kettow. Now, I'm a major associates. We are the civil engineers, land surveyors, and landscape architects on this proposed site. Here before you, as Larry said, for two permits, a site plan permit, and then also a special permit for a 10% reduction of parking. Here on behalf of the applicant, RD Management, represented here tonight by Vice President Al Rossi and the audience. And the basic summary is that the applicant proposes to renovate this existing Kmart building, add a 5,000-square-foot addition to the existing retail building, add a 20,000-square-foot 100 new retail building, and then take the existing Kmart building, which is primarily vacant right now, except for an existing gym, and add in new tenants into that existing space. So I'm sure you're familiar with the location. Right here on the plans is Medway Street, and it connects to Beaver Street, just past the 495 interchange. Currently, as I mentioned, the existing Kmart building that's vacant is right here on the site plan. The gym that's in use right now is there. Existing Budaboo Creek, existing Dollar Tree Store, and then a salon. With regards to the zoning, the project sites in the IB Highway Zoning District. Just a brief overview of the proposed improvements. So the existing 118,000-square-foot Kmart building is here, renovated it into separate retail spaces from A through E on the plans. Two new loading docks at the rear of the site. Then the 6,000-square-foot retail addition is here. This was previously permitted and approved in 2012. And then there's a 20,100-square-foot retail building, as I mentioned, here. Parking lot, as you may notice in the plans, is going to be completely reoriented, much more efficient and safer, so drive aisles will be straight in and out. There'll be no angled parking. You'll notice a pretty significant amount of green space added into that parking lot. Right now, there is no parking islands. There's two existing driveway entrances now. One is on Medway Road. You may be familiar with that. There's two other areas that you can enter the site by vehicles, and that's on Beaver Street. The existing driveway here, that's going to be cut off and closed off with curbing. We're going to reorient that driveway so it's straight across the street from the other driveway, so it's safer. And then this existing driveway on Beaver Street stays as is. The entrance on Medway Street primarily stays as is, with a few improvements. For safety, it's going to be a right in and a right out with some paint and signage to make that a much safer So in terms of truck traffic, there's a whole set of truck turning plans. It's a pretty detailed set of plans you have before you. Truck turning, traffic comes down Beaver Street, makes its way to loading docks at the rear of the site for the Kmart building, and also to the rear of the building that's there now. And then we've also located at the rear of the new 20,000-square-foot retail building. You can make the loop. Truck turning plan show that. Fire access is also provided for safety. That's shown on the truck turning plan as well, full access there. In terms of stormwater management, we'll be before the Conservation Commission discussing that in great detail. We're proposing some new stormwater management systems close to the retail building. The rest of the stormwater stays as is. There's an underground detention system in part of the parking lot. So at the end of the day, we'll be meeting the 10 stormwater standards for the state of Massachusetts for a redevelopment project. It's redevelopment because there's actually a decrease in impervious area. The 6,000-square-foot retail building, 20,000- The six thousand square foot retail building, twenty thousand square foot retail building, both are primarily on existing parking lot. The site's pretty much paved. We're adding pervious areas with all the new islands and landscaping. With regards to the utilities, existing sewer, water, gas, and electric, those connections will all be on site. And then, uh, connections to the new buildings and using some of those existing connections to the Kmart building. All the connections to this, uh, Dollar Tree store, Bugaboo Creek stay as is. Um, as I mentioned, the project will be before the Milford Conservation Commission for a notice of intent. That's because there is a small pocket wetland in the back and there's a, a stream in the back. Um, all the work that's in the back, there's no increase to impervious pavement in those zones. In fact, there's actually a major decrease of impervious addition of green within that two hundred-foot zone, but will be before conservation for all those issues. With regards to the zoning, we're here for the special permit. That's because there's that ten percent reduction that's now allowed in the zoning bylaw. That's a new addition, um, and that's because we have four separate uses on the site and we meet that requirement for the zoning bylaw.
Want to point out-
Can you point out the, uh, four uses?
Sure, so there's an ATM, uh, bank. There'll be, uh, a series of retail and, uh, there's a restaurant, uh, existing, a restaurant proposed, and then there's a, a fitness center, a gym that's there now.
The existing Bugaboo is going to stay?
That'll, yeah, this, so the existing Bugaboo, the existing Dollar Tree, the existing salon, that's all stays.
That's all staying, okay.
If you count the salon, I mean, there's four or five uses basically. It meets that minimum standard. Uh, and then in terms of the wetland resources, there's no disturbance to the wetland resources, but again, that'll be permitted through conservation. So just a quick discussion of stormwater performance standards. As I mentioned, we did do an analysis of existing and proposed stormwater standards. That'll all be discussed with Bonnie. We're, uh, talking to her now about making a few minor tweaks. Um, and then she can go through a review, so we're in that process now. Stormwater report will show that there's a reduction in, uh, peak flows and again, the site will meet the ten stormwater standards that's required by the state. Um, in regards to erosion controls, uh, the plans you have before you show appropriate erosion controls on the property so that'll all be completed prior to construction. So in conclusion, we respectfully submit this application for your review for the two permits as I mentioned, um, for a special permit and site plan review. We've received a few minor comment letters from the fire department, Milford Accessibility Office, and the Milford Water Department. Milford Waters Department comments came in just on Friday. Pretty minor in nature. We're in the process of making those changes. Um, so we'd be submitting an updated plan set to, uh, both your board and the conservation commission. Ultimately, it's a redevelopment project which will enliven and improve this important parcel near four ninety-five. Right now, as I mentioned, it is vacant and severely underutilized, needs a little bit of a makeover. So through careful site design, we'll meet the intents, uh, of your bylaw, improve the stormwater, and improve the landscaping on site with the allowance of this ten percent reduction. So does the board have any questions?
Uh, just, uh, Madam Chair, before you get into the, the board's questions, uh, you'll notice the site plan, uh, agenda item four in your packet. The site plan review, uh, doesn't include Bonnie's, uh, review letter. It doesn't include a letter from sewer.
Sewer or anything.
So, um-
I'm only acting on the, can we just stick to the-
Well, this ties in to, to-
It doesn't, it doesn't.
To that, in terms of, it's going to need to be both, the public hearing and the site plan review will need to be continued at least until your second meeting, which is May nineteenth. Uh, so, uh, to, to the point of, uh, we recognize that those things weren't complete. Um, and, you know, so don't hold that against them. We knew that going in. Um, and then, um, whatever other comments the board has on, on both issues, uh, there should be plenty of time to address all of that.
Okay.
They, I have a letter, uh, requesting a continuance, uh, till then already, so-
Okay.
You know, you have plenty of time to get your answers.
Thank you, thank you, Larry. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
I have a question, if I may.
Can you just give us, and I'm not looking specifically for names, but when we talk about the ten percent reduction, what, what I just want to make sure of is that the uses, even though you have varying uses, um, the, the bank, I'm not going to really classify as a use because it's a, it's, it's a single parking spot, so, but neither hand or there. I just want to be, you, you know, when we're acting upon that, I just want to make sure that the uses are staggered in such a way that the parking isn't concentrated specifically, you know, specifically at certain hours that. When we talked of reduction in parking, it was based on, you know, varying times so that parking was never going to be an issue. I, I know at present configuration, I think it's at eight hundred and forty-three spots and you want it down to seven fifty-eight?
That's correct.
And over here, you said seven thirty-eight, so I just wanted to make sure it's seven fifty-eight that you're looking for?
Uh, the number's seven fifty-eight.
Well, there's oh, oh, okay.
What is that?
Can you just give us some sort of indic- and again, I'm not looking specifically for the tenants as much as I'm looking for, you know, how this is going to work with, with, with your, in, in theory if you get a ten percent reduction.
Sure, so I mean, the prime, primary uses are retail, uh, but there is two restaurants, one existing, one proposed at the moment, and then there's also a gym and a salon.
Those that exist.
Right.
And the salon, what do you, is that a haircut in place? I'm just a simple dude.
That's, yes, yes. So, uh, to answer your question, the restaurants, you know, I envision, you know, lunch, uh, you know, but, and some dinner. So there's, you know, varying times there. Retail will be, you know, somewhat throughout the day, but I imagine more of the trips will be on the weekend. And then, you know, salon is, they're not, I'm sure they're not open late. I'm sure it's more of a day type thing.
Yeah, when I look at your restaurant at, at four thousand square feet, give or take, I'm assuming it's like a sandwich, uh, to be honest with you.
Exactly.
But what I don't know obviously is the, the new proposed twenty thousand square foot. I mean, you're breaking up the building, the Kmart building. There's no real, um, net effect other than you're going to potentially have two separate tenants as, as opposed to one. Now, the twenty thousand, is that a singular tenant or is that to be broken up? Because again, it's, you, you're showing as a box and it's not really giving, and I'm just trying to calculate. A ten percent reduction is great for you, but based on the uses, it may not be good for us and that's what I'm trying to calculate.
No, I understand. That's a good point. So, at the moment, all the tenants haven't been specified yet. That's still, there's a whole art and science to that. That's out of my hands. That's pretty much going on right now, so there's no finality to those specific tenants. But, um, to answer your question about the twenty thousand square foot retail building, um, it's, it's more than likely going to be broken up into smaller tenants. But at the moment, we're showing twenty thousand square foot retail.
Yeah, I know, and I understand that, but, and again, there's a distinction in my mind that if, if one, let's just say, uh, I don't know, sells china, the other one sells something else. Uh, again, when we start calculating that their business operations, you know, retail doesn't close at five o'clock whereas perhaps a dentist's office would.
Sure.
And this is what I'm trying to, you know, like I said, you're asking for ten percent reduction, but based on retail, I don't see how a ten percent reduction is going to be favorable if this is all retail. And that's what I'm just trying to figure out in my own mind.
So, I think you bring us some good points. Um, at the end of the day though, um, at Kmart in its heyday, did you see that parking lot full? Where at seven hundred and fifty?
I saw it full of trucks, which I'm glad to say that that's not going to be the case anymore. So, yeah, I did see it full, so be careful what you ask.
No, I'm sure. There's, there's time periods, you know, of course, during, you know, the, the holidays, right? But at the end of the day, I think on a normal day-to-day use, there'll be overlaps. It's not all tenants will be there at all the peak periods. That's what we envision. Seven hundred and fifty-eight parking spaces is a lot.
Don't misunderstand me. Obviously, having this have some life when you first come into Milford is favorable for all of us. So it's not that I'm opposing what you're saying. I just can't, I, I have to be able to mathematically equate the ten percent reduction to ensure that it's going to work because there's been other locations in this town that we've given reductions and unfortunately, it hasn't worked. And people are, you know, you can't find a parking spot or they're parked out on the state highway which they don't belong on, so-
Sure.
Again, I'm just, I just need some sort of direction just so I can understand that there, we, we're having staggering hours and that the ten percent reduction is going to be favorable.
Well, just, just to that point, one of the problems with the old bylaw, uh, that led us into looking at this approach was that the old bylaw had, uh, a convoluted calculation, uh, formula to go through based on-
Uses.
Alternative hours, uh, and, and, uh, uses that had alternating hours. Uh, very seldom did the calculation ever end up favorable for a reduction, uh, to begin with. And even when it did, uh, that kind of missed the point of, of, uh, shared trips in, in a plaza to begin with. Uh, so without totally throwing the baby out with the bathwater, we came up with this tiered approach, uh, and they're asking for the first tier reduction of, of ten to twenty percent reduction depending upon how many different uses there are in the plaza without specifically requiring that they show, uh, off-hour uses. Because from our own experience with the old bylaw, that really didn't help either the town or a developer trying to, to refurbish a, a plaza like this. So, that's how we ended up here. Uh, and, and, uh, to the point of what specifically the uses are, um, to qualify, they, they need three to five uh, distinguishable uses under the current bylaw, the recently amended bylaw. For, for a request of ten percent, they'd have to have more than five, uh, to, to go for twenty and they're not asking for that obviously.
Well, I don't, again, to that point, I don't see that they have five separate uses anyhow, so.
No, we're not asking for that, but Larry makes a good point. The, the prior bylaws, I, I think, I think the usages were more, I mean,
I think the purpose of the bylaw was to look at multiple tenants and the fact that if you have a tenant, if you have a tenant, especially with this, this size, as compared to if you had five sites, there's a possibility that any one of those sites may max out, but the chances of those five sites at the same time maxing out is very slim. You're using, you're using all of the parking to get, so I don't have a problem with the ten percent. The only issue I have is, is a site plan issue outside of the ten percent, but I, I don't have a problem with the ten percent is I'm not convinced that we need two driveways on Beaver Street. Um, I, the driveway that's there now, the existing driveway that's closest to Kmart, now the other end.
Oh, this one, yeah.
That one, I, 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 when that was active, and still active to a certain extent, but, but, um, trying to get out from that location was sometimes scary if you looked back down towards the, uh, the hotel because people probably go a little bit faster than they should, but the site distance on that location is not the greatest.
It's higher.
I like the fact that you've moved the other one away because the one closest to the mobile was not a great location.
Wasn't practical to try to get out already.
Trying to get in and out, there, there's been multiple accidents, people trying to get into the mobile, people trying to get out of the Kmart Plaza and stuff. There was too much going on in that one location. So I'm not adverse to that location. I'm not sure if there isn't a better location slightly between the two that would be adjacent to the last driveway coming out. I, uh, not sure if it's the Taz's driveway or whatever, but I don't know that we need, and I looked at the traffic counts that, uh, you had given and I'm not sure that there's a, there's a need within the facility that you need to have two driveways on Beaver Street. I think one driveway can easily handle the amount of flow that's coming out of there as, as it does on the other one. The other, on, on one oh nine, I do have an issue. I, I'm, I like the idea of the right in, right out. I don't think it's going to work. We, we, we did this at, at the Stop and Shop Quarry Square Plaza, um, on sixteen. At one point in time, the exit by ground round, uh, ground rounds.
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine. And, um, that sign, that, that never worked. Everybody just came out and did whatever they wanted to do and there was no control at that location. Based on the way the layout is, I think we'd end up with the same situation, so I'm not sure that it's going to work. I, I understand why it's there. It's not the greatest thing to try to take a left coming out of there. It's not the safest thing. We'd like people to come out onto the, onto Beaver Street and use the lights at Beaver, but I'm not sure that we'll be able to control that, so I'm not- We could probably discuss that at site plan. I don't know that that would be a major change, but I, I would like to, when you do come back as part of site plan to, to me, I would like to look at one entrance on, on the Beaver Street side.
Well, um, we can talk about that. I'd like to actually, by preference, maybe talk through some of these concerns now so that way we can make one set of plan changes and not go through an extended period of, here's a new layout plan in separate time. Here's a new drainage plan. So in terms of your questions, I think you bring up some good points. This, uh, driveway here on Beaver Street, uh, maybe we can look at eliminating it if that's something you want. If we brought it closer to the other driveway, I'm not sure. I think-
I wouldn't, I, I'm not saying bring it closer. I'm saying one driveway. I'm just saying the location. I'm not convinced that your location there is, is the best if you only had one. But I, I, the fact that you've already moved it gets me out of the way of where I want it to be as to whether if you only had one along that side, is that the best location or not? I, I, I may leave that up to you as to whether that's the best location or not.
Sure, and we have a traffic engineering board. We can look at that issue. Um, regards to the Medway Street, uh, road entrance, I understand completely. The issues about, uh, accidents and traffic and trying to get people to move. At the moment, it's going to be a major improvement to paint this and add the signage and add the, um, arrows. If it's something the board wanted, maybe we could look at instead of a paint in the middle, this is a concrete, um, barrier. That way, somebody couldn't try to make a turn across it. And that would really discourage any, um, improper turns. That's the other suggestion I could make.
Just what they do at Stop and Shop, you can only take, take a right and they all hold it.
Yeah, the signs, everything's down.
Is there a sign there now? Oh, I hadn't seen that. But a lot of people wait in line to hook a left. They ignore it.
Yeah, that's right.
In this case, the, the idea of having a directional choker island, uh, instead of the striping, uh, it would have to be back on their own property because the, you know, you can't put it out in the right of way. So, uh, the thing in, in that specific location, and, and Ryan can point it out, uh, their, uh, their striping, as I recall from what I saw on the plan, actually goes beyond the property line. So, the, the striping, uh-
I assume he did that for effect.
Well, they might have, but he's, he's not going to put it in there.
Oh, I know that.
And if you, and especially if you do a choker island, it would have to be back on their own property. So I don't know, the difference shows up on that.
Yeah, it's like a couple feet over the, over the right of way. That's there now, yeah, that's there now.
So you could do a direct, a more directional, uh, right turn out, right turn in, uh, but you can't have any of that stuff out in the actual highway route.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're going to have to if you want to go down that path. I, the painted's going to be awful tough to do. Uh, you know, unless, unless you, unless you do some, some raised median, I don't think the painted's going to work.
I'd rather see a raised median for a dedicated right exit than it would to have it painted. When I say designated, unlike the one that's at Lowe's, which does not effectively work. And, and this is the same principle. I'm all for the right turn exit, but it, it, it needs to be orientated so that it, you have to take a right. There's no other option.
You cannot go other ways, yeah.
Now, as far as coming in, I understand the safety concern and I like the premise, but I've watched too many people take their, take their driving skills and close their eyes, I guess. I, I don't know how else to describe what they do.
Yeah, until, until that happens, you're not going to do anything until the state makes that change. And I think, I think you're in a situation, especially there, I think because of the lights at Beaver, it, it gaps so people take in the left. It's not that difficult, so I think they're going to do it no matter what you do.
And again, I-
But I think if we do control the right out, at least that would help. So you don't have people coming across the other way and, and, and blocking that. So I, I think if you put a median through there, I think that would be a good idea.
And, and the proposal includes new signage in the site, but that kind of traffic signage isn't enforceable by the local police department, so.
I think actually it is, but they would have to request it. I think legally that, the, I just, I just went through this. So act, it, it can be, but they would have to request the police department be there to enforce it is the way it would have to go. If there's no request, it, you're right, it is not enforceable. You couldn't do anything.
Yeah, but if you make, if you orientate it in such a way that it's physically impossible to take anything but a right, unless you want to take out your, your tires and your rims, which-
Yeah, no, I, I think that would, that would be an improvement. And like I said, I, 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 the, the one entrance on, on Beaver Street, I think would help. I, I don't want that first entrance to K.
One way and all.
I just have one point that I, that I, that I noticed that you are going to replace the fence, the fencing up by the cemetery. Is that correct?
That's correct, so-
Is that going to be an eight, eight-foot fence?
So, let me just clarify. There's an existing-
Wow, there really much-
Whoever knocked it down never replaced it.
There must have been a squirrel who jumped on it and things down.
So my, my point is, it is going to be replaced.
Well, he was going to add to that. He didn't say yes.
I'm waiting for input.
Okay, go ahead. I'm waiting.
Okay, so there's an existing chain link fence there now. Comes up about midway, midway to the, to the side of that gym, right? There's a new wooden fence that comes beyond that gym up to here. That's a new wooden socket fence. I don't know, last year or so. I just drove out there today.
I didn't notice it. I was down there.
I was down there yesterday.
Yeah, I don't notice it.
I never saw it.
So drive out to the corner of the gym and then there's a gap right- So drive out to the corner of the gym, and then there's a gap right here of, of no fencing. So what we're proposing is to add wooden fencing starting from that existing retaining wall behind the retail building. Continue it all the way until it meets the brand-new wooden fence that's there now.
Let's leave that option open, because again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you're incorrect, but that's not what my memory suggests, but I've never orientated it with the map, so.
I have a picture on my phone if you want.
Nah, that's fine, I can.
That's all right, all right.
No, that's fine, I mean, again, we'll just leave that option open. I think you get the sense that.
Yeah.
The board is preferring that it be.
Eight feet.
No, you can't, it can only be six.
Okay.
But I think you, you get the gist, that the board's looking for a definitive separation.
Yes.
Yes.
So that's actually gonna be on the new set of plans. We have it on the set now.
Okay.
You know, obviously before you. So it'll be a stockade fence at six feet high that matches the existing wooden fence, the part that's there now.
All right. Hearing, no one else on the board have any questions? And this is a public hearing. Is there anyone out there that'd like to speak to this? Yes, please tell us your name and your address.
I'm Carol Drew, I'm here representing Sacred Heart Cemetery in Father Richard Skioli. I just wanna make a suggestion with the fence. It seems to be the plow operators, when they plow the parking lot, that push the snow into it and knocks it on our property.
Oh, okay.
So if there was some sort of a retaining wall, like cement or something, and then the fence on top of that, it might work better. We wouldn't have to keep calling Elizabeth to tell her the fence is down.
Okay.
Or, or you put a vinyl fence up, okay? And those are costly. So every time your plow operator wants to take it down, I'm sure there will be a back charge to them. There's another way to resolve that too. Again, it's not fair.
Well, she insists that we're the ones doing it, but I have to keep it.
Again, it's the squirrel, it's the magic squirrel. Believe me, I have them running around my neighborhood too, I know what you're saying.
Yeah. Carol, yeah.
Again, I think, I think there's a couple of members that are certainly gonna go down there this week and then.
Check it out.
Again, because my recollection's slightly different than what Ryan's saying, but I, I don't hang out down there.
But it's just a small, you know, it's not.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, it seems like you're pushing the paved area slightly away from there as is, too.
Good, I can see a green space.
Yeah, adding.
But do they stay away from the green space when they plow?
Well, there'll be a curb, there'll be a curb there, so they won't be able to mount the curb along the parking spot there. It might pour snow, but at least there's someplace to store it. It appears that, and, and you can tell us when you come back exactly what the width of that, I can't tell what it is here, but it, it does appear that there is some width there of green space, which is different than what's there now.
That's correct. So basically, the proposed plan will show a fence that's six inches to a foot off the property line on our side of the property line. We'll add that wooden fence that would discourage any snow from going beyond the property. You can't physically.
Referring to that, Ryan.
It'll be a solid wooden fence.
I want the gray side on the cemetery.
Plow knocks the fence over, and then we have to call to say the fence is knocked over.
Sure.
Because then people come out of the plaza, they cut through the cemetery, they throw all their trash.
No, it's unfortunate, I think. Yep, no, that would absolutely help, and I think there are some.
The other question we have is, do you have any, I don't see any on the plan, but do you have any thoughts for, we'd like to snow, to store the snow?
There's a whole snow storage plan in the set of plans.
Is there?
In here?
Yes.
Not a problem.
That's a good point. I can pull it out on here.
I think it's on C six. It's backwards. It's labeled down in the right-hand corner, snow storage plan with sheet C six.
Where is it?
So it has the crosshatched areas called out several of those spots in the lot.
All right, so I think, Ryan, to that point, because it's apparent that you've been plagued over the years with snow storage up against the fence.
Sure.
That I would highly recommend that that not be one of the snow storage locations.
We can make adjustments to the plan, that's not a problem at all.
I think it behooves you.
You could use the, use the area along Beaver Street.
There's always a way to rectify.
There is, yeah.
So at, at the end of the day, you know, this, this is where the snow storage will be stored, and then any excess snow, like a year, like, you know.
Yeah, in the center.
Yeah.
It's going off-site, it's getting trucked off-site. There's no question about it.
And no choice.
You may, you may also have, besides, you have the Beaver Street, and I think when you take a look at it, I'd, I'd be concerned, depending on what you do with your exits on Beaver Street, the planting plan that you show will affect your site distances along there.
Yes.
So I think some of the trees that you have there probably aren't a, aren't a good idea to have in those locations. So you may, you may wanna just have those as somewhat open, open areas, which you can then use as some amount of snow.
Well, I'd rather, I'd rather see them replanted over there in the snow storage location so that you know you can't store snow over there.
So this is what I could say, we can look at definitely moving those trees. We're trying to meet the spirit and intent of that landscape bylaw.
Right.
Yeah, no, you can certainly do it.
If, if you're amenable to it, we can take those trees and move them up here, provide a little more shade for the cemetery, that's not a problem.
Well, I, I mean, first priority is certainly safety, and if those trees are gonna be in the way of site distance when you get that, when you get that set up, I.
No, no, absolutely, I hear exactly what you're saying. The intention, though, is those are deciduous trees with higher branching. So, you know, lindens, maples, those sort of things that grow taller, they're not gonna be a site issue.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, what we usually find is when people plant them, before they grow up, they're an issue.
Right, so.
Lack of maintenance.
Right, so in terms of resolution, talking, you know, we can move them up there.
Move them up in the back.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm certainly not talking about the whole length, but I think.
No, but I think it solves two problems.
Centered wherever your entrance is, or that, you know, having that clear area is gonna be critical.
Sure, not a problem at all.
He could show the line of sight, the clear sight triangles.
Yeah.
As well, so.
All right, when are we gonna continue this?
To the next meeting, I think.
No, second, no, second meeting.
I, I have one more comment from, are you all set, Carol?
May?
I'm the chair lady.
Yes.
I just have a question for this gentleman.
Sure, go right ahead.
Going back to the, the entrance on Medway Street.
Uh-huh.
To go into their plaza.
Mm-hmm.
It's not gonna change, there's still gonna be the entrance and the exit.
The main entrance, are you talking?
Yes.
Yes.
And the main exit.
Well, according to the way he proposes, that's not.
That's not the main, no.
The way he proposes.
That's what I'm asking, how is it? You have the, the old home national bank there and then you have the gas station, and then trying to get in, not only the cars coming out of the gas station, what I have found is those people trying to get into McDonald's.
Okay.
So, you know, you're taking the left.
Okay.
And all of a sudden, there's cars, and, and they're taking.[1708.38]